It's called the meeting of order and please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their knowledge for which we stand as one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My speaker on? No, it's this, alright. Do we have any citizens' requests to speak about non-action items?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll go to superintendent's reports, construction update.
Okay, so there's a little bit of a change of the agenda. Originally, we were gonna try to work in the part two of the visioning, but I think it probably works better in a work session with an informal setting versus trying to run that through Robert's Rules of Order and everything else associated with the regular meeting. So, count on that will be our primary activity at the August meeting, so that'll be what we'll start with. And that'll be about an hour as we work through that. Construction update, construction committee was onsite on Thursday, walked the site. We've received from Kraus Anderson, I pass it along to the rest of the board, areas that they feel may not be 100% completed by the time school opens up. One of the things that we will be doing in about two weeks, I've talked with Peg about this and Tracy also, that we'll be putting together probably an informational email sent out to parents and community, what they can expect when they walk in the door the first day, because there will be parts that are, the building will be operational, but we knew that it won't be completely done when we open the door on September 10th. So, we wanna make sure that people understand that this is kinda what you can expect when you come in, and also some timelines of when some of those things will be completed. I think the big piece with those items happened to be related to areas that are not necessarily needed for us to open school as it impacts instructional environment. And so, that's our, what we've done is worked with them to prioritize where they put their personnel, to make sure that the instructional environment is as solid as possible. We have some bathrooms over on the east side that won't be ready when school starts, but it'll be, there's other bathrooms that are very close to be able to utilize those spaces, I'm sorry, not east side, it'd be the west side of the building, not the east side, there was a typo in their report. There's some corridor ceilings, so just some ceilings in the corridor that'll be finishing out. A lot of this work will happen at night after kids are gone, as we work through that, primarily in the area E and area K. If you remember, those areas are on the west side of the building, you know, parts of the building that aren't gonna be ready when school starts. The form wood rib, as we talk about the wood ribs, if you remember in the auditorium, there's those giant wood ribs that go over. We finally believe we have resolution to some of the unfortunate situations that are happening with that wood. So, that has, the way they're gonna fasten and then put some expansion joints in, it's, I don't know, we can get into a more technical conversation if you'd like, but essentially that came to resolution last week, and so there's a couple of week lead time on getting the other material there, and then it'll take 'em a solid couple of weeks to get it going. They know that if it's not done before school starts, that they'll be working in the evenings, and they've already secured time to do those things. The east gym bleachers, right now, the gym, so the big gym, the competition gym, the east gym, is, the floors are being sanded, they've been sanded today. We're probably another two weeks out from them being completed, and then they have to sit for a week, so it's about a three-week period. And then, once that starts, essentially what happens is they start putting in the bleachers. And so, I would anticipate that they'd start those bleachers, you know, the week before school starts, but on here, I know it said it'd take about four to five weeks, but talking with the guys on the ground, they think it's, you know, closer to two weeks. But obviously, over or under promise and over deliver is where we'd like to go with that. So, we're working with the, our activities director, Steph DeVos, to figure out what we're doing with volleyball and things along those lines. PE is less of an issue because we have all the facilities outside for them to be able to use those spaces. The MC 125 corridor, so essentially, this is the corridor in between the gym and the main part of the building. There was, there's some structural changes and issues that came up through the process that delayed that process, and so essentially, I think what's gonna happen is, you know, that area may be shut off to student use for a week or two after school starts, but it really doesn't impact instruction at all, so we'll probably shut the fire doors in that area so they can work during the day and get stuff done. The indoor track, I believe, is gonna start in the next week or two. We would anticipate that that would be up and running, as well as the indoor fitness facility. The east side classroom area, they started putting carpet in today, it's really looking good. The ceilings are in, walls are painted, carpet's going in, doors and windows are in, and so that's moving through quite nicely. The lower level is about a week behind that schedule, so we're in pretty good shape. The goal is to be ready for furniture about the 27th of August, so that still gives us about two weeks to get furniture in there and get teachers moved into their classrooms and get things rolling. Teachers report back to work, I believe it's September 4th, so we're working through some of those things. The ramp area, the lovely ramps, they're kinda on the northern part of the building. That work, one of the problems with that is, it's one of the main thoroughfares, both obviously for our kids during the year, but also for contractors as they try to get materials up into the second level on the east side, so you can't really do the finish work in that corridor until they're done going up into that second level, and so they're going to be starting on that, that gets tile over some of that kinda cast-in-place concrete and things like that, but that's about a two-week period to install that. If it's not done before school starts, they'll be working in the evenings, they work off of just the electric lifts and things along those lines, you know, because the other pinch is also, so even though there's really nothing else going upstairs as far as materials for the most part, there's about 20, some classrooms up there that need to be outfitted with furniture. If you notice, there's 27 semi-trailer sitting in the parking lot at the high school with existing furniture that needs to make its way back into the building, plus the furniture that gets delivered with the new parts of the building as well. So, they're working, they'll be working to get that. All of these areas don't affect occupancy, we'll still have occupancy. Elevators should be operational here in the next couple of days, just saw some emails on that before it came in. But overall, we're just kinda, you know, pushing as hard as we can push. I think on Friday, they had 280 people onsite, Saturday, they had another 80 working on Saturday, and I think there were still 25 or so working on Sunday. So, they are, they're putting quite a few hours in getting things done, but, you know, right now, I think the only areas that were not be finished would be things that are not gonna impact our ability to provide instruction, so, questions? And when we send out the communication, we probably won't talk about area E or area M or area K, we'll try to put it in a point where people can kinda reference, but if you have not been in that building all summer, as some people have just went in last week, it'll be hard to even reference areas that you're familiar with because that building doesn't look like it did. I think Tim had given his department a tour, some of those young ladies have been with us, the district, for over, what, 30 years, had kids go through that high school, and they were saying, "I am having trouble figuring out where I'm at in this building." And so, it is, it is pretty neat, all the challenges aside, it is pretty neat to see it all coming together, and I think we'll be able to confidently say we've held good on our promise that it's not lipstick on a pig, 'cause I know that was Bob's favorite phrase I used to use during the pre-referendum. So, that's the construction update unless you have questions.
So, did that big window get put in the east end of that hallway there, on the east side of the high school?
Yeah, so I think we are, as of today, I think the last set of doors went into the building, so I think we are now finally all enclosed in the building, so that's the east hall, east side of the north hallway, so that's, we're in a pretty, we're in a pretty good spot that way. We've had night security folks, we've basically been running that since, what, May 1st, or May 31st maybe, or, we've had people that have been in the building seven days a week from 10 o'clock at night until 5:00 in the morning every night. We have had some challenges. One happened about a week ago, week and a half ago, where the woman that we have doing, kinda just walking the building, came across an individual in the building at about 10 o'clock at night, and couldn't quite figure out how he got in, but police were called and they helped handle that situation, and then a couple nights later, I think last week, we had at about 1:30 in the morning, cars driving up, trying to check door, pulling on doors, trying to see if any of them are unlocked to get in, and so then the police were called also. So, we are back to night custodial crews on the overnights, and so we'll have quite a few more people in that building 24/7 now. That's all I have.
Okay, then, just turn it over to Erin for the expulsion report.
Yep. So, this is the annual student pre-expulsion expulsion report. The school district of Hudson has used a pre-expulsion conference process for 24 years. Purpose of these conferences is to address expellable behavior and avoid, when possible, referring students to the board for expulsion. This process has been highlighted by DPI and its case studies of districts who have a process for alternatives to expulsion. During the pre-expulsion conference, the district works with a student, family, and administration to discuss the behavioral incident, its causes, student's educational and discipline record, to develop a voluntary agreement in which the student and family agree to a number of conditions. And then I had listed some examples of the conditions that we may include in that agreement. The conditions in the agreement serve to prevent future behavioral incidents and set the student up for success by requiring steps to accessing resources within and outside of the district, depending on the student's need. So, in terms of data for the 1718 school year, we held nine pre-expulsion conferences. Nine of those resulted in an agreement in lieu of expulsion. Two students were referred to the Board of Education for an expulsion hearing. As compared with the previous four years, there was a significant decrease in the number of pre-expulsion meetings. Both the middle school and the high school have worked really hard this year to implement more behavioral contracts for students who may be struggling behaviorally, which I think really helps strengthen the relationship between the school and that student and family. This year, male students accounted for 100% of the pre-expulsion and expulsion meetings, middle school students accounted for 57%. Students with disabilities accounted for 38% of the pre-expulsion meetings. Students with disabilities represent about 12% of this district population, so this 38% is a four-year low, and the past four-year average is 51% of pre-expulsion, expulsion meetings involving students with disabilities. So, that's just kind of a recap of this year. Questions?
President?
Sue.
Just, under what category of expellable behaviors would something like if students were destructive to school property or graffiti or whatever?
That would fall, yep, that would fall under vandalism, is that what you're looking?
Oh, I didn't see that, it wasn't-
Nope, so that one would fall under, I had that question too. That one, yep, that one fell actually under the other. Depending on what the vandalism is, sometimes it falls under threat as well.
Oh, okay, that's what I was thinking it might.
Yep.
Any other questions? Otherwise, I guess it's kind of a good report in the sense that we had, although we had the two expulsions-
Sure.
It wasn't zero like we had a couple of years ago, but-
Right, yep.
Still, the total number of students involved way down.
Agreed, yep.
Mr. President?
Yes?
So, just one call out here, I mean, 'cause you look at the expellable behaviors, drug and alcohol went down significantly over the 1516 and 1617 calendar years, right? 2020-
Are you looking at the historical?
Yeah, the 2020 and then down to 5, is that right?
It's just number of cases?
Right.
That's a big drop.
Yeah.
Did we do anything different there? Did we have the, so remember those two years, it seemed like we had a lot of discussions around how frequently the, you know, we had brought the dogs in the building and where, you know, this year was a little bit different because we had a lot of chaos going on in the school. Just curious if there was anything we did differently there, or if we can speak to any of the reasons why the data is what it is?
I think there are a couple of things that we did to help kind of proactively address those things. I think this year, we did, especially from the high school, some parent communication about different drug and alcohol abuse. We've also really been engaging with our AODA specialist in terms of meeting with groups of students to try to address and educate those things proactively rather than waiting for a kid to, you know, fail and get caught, so.
Yeah, I was just at a work engagement, was talking with someone about this, and they said their, their school, they implemented random drug testing. I don't know of any, like, I hadn't heard of that, I didn't know that that was something that was legal to do.
That's not something that we do across the board. Sometimes we do write that into the voluntary agreement, that they will be subject to random drug tests, but that wouldn't be something we would-
Are you talking about all kids?
Yeah.
Across the board.
Just in the high school, they did it like across the-
I mean, it's legal to do, but it creates a whole lot of challenges.
Oh, yeah, like, I was, like, wow, that's-
And it has to be random, hence they have to be random in order to-
Yep.
Have it be legal.
Right.
But it's very expensive and not sure how productive that is.
Well, it's great to see the results, I just, you know, I think it's, it's tough in today's society, I think, to curb those things, and it's-
Absolutely.
Great to see us-
Yep.
Have the result that we did last year, it'd be great to see that-
Continue.
Continue, yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further questions for Erin? Otherwise, Erin, thank you for the report, good report. Now, mental health grant, is that you also?
Yep, this one's a little more exciting.
Okay.
I'm super excited to share this with you, so we are the recipient of the school-based mental health grant through DPI in the amount of $70,985, which is a huge deal. When I've been talking to other districts, this is, you know, a lot of, a lot of school districts applied for this grant and didn't get it, and so I think it speaks a lot to the work of our team pulling this together in a really organized fashion this spring with a tight timeline. So, this spring, a team of staff, parents, and our community mental health partner worked collaboratively to complete the grant application. This work really focused around a mental health needs assessment to focus the development of a comprehensive school mental health services plan. So, really, we boiled it down to three things that we wanted to target based on that needs assessment, so increased staff knowledge about mental health needs of students, increased staff capacity to provide support and services to students who have experienced trauma or mental health issues, and then improving self-care for staff. So, specifically, the grant components include the addition of a point four mental health coordinator to really oversee and stay on top of the grant activities and make sure that we're moving these along. Establishing mental health teams within each building, we're really looking at embedding this into current structure, so many of our schools have an SST team or a PBIS kind of tier-two looking at interventions for students, where they'll discuss data and respond to student mental health needs and discuss proactive strategies we can implement at each school as well. Develop a Hudson area mental health advisory council, this one, to me, is really exciting, pulling together community members, parents, staff, and students to really talk about what the barriers are in accessing mental health and what the issues are, and developing goals to address those. The grant allows us to reach a few more students directly through services with our community mental health partner. The grant does not allow us to pay for direct service for kids, and so it doesn't allow us to fill, you know, that gap that we have, but we can use money to collaborate with the community mental health partner to implement co-facilitation of some student groups, so facilitating a group with our AODA specialist or our counselors, and so each of our eight buildings will have the opportunity to do that. We also will move that collaboration and co-facilitation into our center-based programs for students with behavioral challenges, which is a huge need there as well. The other one, define and develop a referral process to increase access to mental health services. We have a really tight referral process to our school-based mental health, but really expanding that to how are we helping kids access things in the community as well, not just within our building, 'cause that doesn't work for every family. And then, provide professional development. It was really important to this team that we allow schools to, through a data collection, really identify what their area of need is in terms of professional development, so that is built into the grant as well. And then, plan, develop, and coordinate activities to target self-care for staff. While most of our grant focuses on what we're doing for kids, we have a pretty amazing staff who we ask to do a difficult job every day, and so it's really helping staff recognize when they're experiencing empathy fatigue, and what are some strategies and what are some supports we can put in place for them. That's it in a nutshell.
Right, Sue.
Ms. President, anyway, first of all, huge, huge, huge congratulations, this is amazing, and then, of course, it's gonna dovetail on Tracy's report too. So, I just think this is such a refined approach and just toned beautifully, and I like the element of the self-care for staff too, I think that, I hadn't even thought about that side.
Okay, so just to clarify, this grant that you just reported on is one that has been granted by DPI?
Yes.
And now, Tracy's report's gonna be on the school safety, but through the DOJ, there's going to be some additional funds available, and today was the deadline, I think, for applying for that grant, but there's-
Just the notice of intent to apply.
Notice of intent, but there's still an application process, and there's certain parameters that you have to agree to, and-
Right.
So, like where the funds are directed and willingness to report on certain items and so forth, I think. And so, that's what you're, it sounds like no matter whether it's DPI or DOJ, there's always some type of strings that are attached to the funds, but you feel on this one, this is giving us enough discretion that we're gonna be able to target the money where it needs to go?
I do, I, so the DPI grant, the strings are really attached in terms of what is an allowable cost, and those are already built into the grant. So, they wouldn't have approved it if it weren't an allowable cost, they're not asking us to send data in, although that's something that internally we'll definitely be looking at.
Okay, great. Yes, Heather?
Mr. President, so is this presumed to be a one-year-only grant that will help us build capacity to do better in the future with resources we have, or is this a program that we think might provide annual funding?
I think that's still up in the air right now. I think DPI's hope is that this funding in some capacity would continue, but right now, they're, they don't have that answer, so right now, it's just a one-time grant.
Maybe it would become multiple year if we went to one-year terms for some of the state offices, like attorney general and school superintendent, maybe, but, alright, that was just in just.
Mr. President? Kind of related to Heather's question, with regard to the mental health coordinator position, do you see that as an ongoing position or just something to get all this organized and started, not started, but?
Yep, right now, it's funded for one year through this grant. I think as we go through this year and we work through our staffing process and we see that that might be, you know, valuable, then we'd have to kinda work that within our existing budget.
Good.
Okay, any other questions on the mental health grant? So, thank you for your efforts there, and that, good news, now more good news. Tracy, is this one yours, the school safety?
This one is, so what I'm going to speak to is the, just over $188,000 that the school district was awarded from the Department of Justice as a school safety grant. There are two components to round one of this grant, and one is with primary, the primary security expenditures, and these expenditures are going toward further securing our entrances, so with the dollars in this category, we will be putting the shatter-resistant film on all of our school entryways, and then we're also required to do some additional security at our entrances, so at the start of the day, we will have staff who are present monitoring all open entries. So, like for the high school, which has, in the past, multiple ways students would be coming into that building, we will likely have perhaps two or three doorways that are open in the morning in supervision of those entryways at that time, and then also at the end of the school day. Additionally, we will be asking all visitors to the building to present an ID when they enter the building and sign in, just as another additional security measure that's new for us, not new for school-age care, but it is new for our buildings. And then, advanced security expenditures relate to funds that we can use on the inside of the building, and so we're looking at, again, putting the shatter-resistant film on our larger storefront window, classrooms with storefront windows, or in the high school, in the new addition where we have the sliding glass doors. On a day-to-day basis, those are all good things because it provides increased supervision of what's going on in our building, but in the event of an intruder, it does put us at some risk, and so the shatter-resistant film would be important to that. In addition to that piece, kind of to go along with what Erin was talking about, there are, this grant also requires that we provide training to our staff on trauma-sensitive schools, so all of our certified staff administrators, paraprofessionals, and school-age care staff will be participating in that training through DPI. And then, we've added on the active alert system through Hedge Tactical that all of our staff will be trained on September 4th and 6th, I believe, and they will be going into each building and doing a building-specific training on some self-defense kinds of things for staff, this isn't a student training, and also de-escalation as well as trauma first aid, in addition to how to use the app. And then, we're also working with law enforcement to perform a safety and security assessment that's required by the state so that we can update our safety plans, and then finally doing the mandated reporting for all staff. And this is an additional piece to our mandated reporting that covers the requirement that if a staff member learns of a threat that a student has posed to the safety of the school or persons, that those are required to be reported. So, that's the two components of round one, there are additional dollars available, so the state is established round two, we have submitted our letter of intent, and with these dollars, we don't know what that amount is yet until the state has all of the letters of intent in, but it would be a per-pupil rate that we would receive, and those dollars are for additional training in our staff and mental health with a mental health focus. And so, we would probably be looking at, again, tying to Erin's piece with shoring up the work of our crisis teams in each of our buildings.
Okay, so Tracy, just a little context, the governor, when he announced this, was about $100 million for school safety, security items, and roughly a little over $50 million was granted in that first round-
Correct.
-in different waves, if you will, and now, this second half is gonna be roughly, what, $46, $47 million that will be divided. Is there some idea, maybe this is a segue to Tim's report on the preliminary budget, but of the $260,000 the two of you just reported on, how much of that money would've been spent probably anyway, and it would've just come out of our local taxpayer dollars instead of, you know, from the state? Just an estimate, I know I didn't ask you this before.
I'd venture a guess on the, on the safety grant, probably all of it, you know, we'd spend, we would've spent at least $190,000 to put the film on the windows.
Well, we would not necessarily-
We wouldn't necessarily have done the work, I mean, so, part of the impetus behind getting this work done is the fact that the safety grant was available, so if you're asking if we didn't have those grants, would we have still done these things and paid for it with district dollars, the question is probably not, or the answer is probably not. If we were going to do these things without the grants, then we'd have no other choice. But we were not planning on, at least at this point- But we were not planning on, at least at this point, doing these types of improvements, other than addressing some of the glass issues we have at the high school. And I think Tracy touched on it, but I mean, I understand this is entryway glass film. This is not the entire building. And that'll be a future discussion we need to have with the board as to the level of funds to potentially allocate towards adding the film to all areas of glass on the interior parts of the building.
Right, yeah, because the focus of the grant was to be entries. There were certain constrictures on the grant as far as what we could and number of dollars per building and so forth.
The other thing to keep in mind is part of the, it's not the grant-related, state law-related. As Tracy talked about, there is a new requirement that people have to show an ID to get into our buildings. That's a new state law. It will frustrate people. But we're working on what that system looks like, where it may, they have to scan their ID and it automatically does a, you know, cursory background check on that individual right there on the spot as it's tied into a system. So understand that right now, you know, obviously, people come in, they check in and things along those lines. But it's, the new expectation under the new state law is that you have to have, I believe it's a state-issued ID, is that right, Tracy? Have they been that precise?
At this point, that is what we're asking, that people present.
So there will be a level of frustration because without it, you don't get into the buildings during school hour. So parent comes to pick up their kid, they forget the driver's license at home or don't have ID at home, they're going to have to go home and get it before we would allow them to enter the building.
Carrie?
Even if they're recognized by
Correct.
Is that the same for staff that's going building to building?
Yeah, I mean, our staff should be wearing their ID badges. They all have them.
But would they also need a state-issued ID?
Well, they, I mean, they have a key and their ID badge gets them indoors with key fobs.
So that's okay?
Yeah, so that would be okay. So, but I mean, it's, and I think it's all school buildings, public and private. I know for sure it's public.
Anybody receiving dollars within this grant?
Receiving grant dollars, has to have that.
Will there be a communication piece that goes out to parents to?
So it has already been placed in the handbook, but we will be talking, I mean, it will be an ongoing, right?
So we'll be sending kind of a, another, you know, big push out to parents here as we get closer to the school year, because we're still about four weeks out. Just remind them of some things that have changed since they probably left in May. And the big one is the safety and security pieces.
Okay, any other questions on the grant reports? But anyway, good work, Tracy. That was a fun trip to take over to Eau Claire and be able to get a grant of that size. I guess you do the math, we're obviously something that was above the average grant, you know, statewide. If there's 400-plus districts and $54 million that was given out. Some, we would have probably gotten more hadn't, had we not had already some security in place in our entrances.
Correct. We were in a good place going into our request just because we had already done the work to secure our school entrances and also having locks on our classroom doors. I mean, those were for the primary funds that is, that was the focus.
Right.
May I ask one quick question of Tracy? Were there, there are guidelines for writing the grant, but
Very specific, yes.
Very specific, okay. And was there anything, or, I mean, were those guidelines, would they have allowed for anything that otherwise might be perceived as outrageous to ask to do for your school? I don't know, like have machine guns on the roof or something?
Well, so our request to put the shatter-resistant film on interior windows was beyond what was outlined in the grant. We needed to explain why we wanted to use those advanced funds for that space. So we just needed to provide a rationale.
Any other questions? All right, moving on then to Tim for the preliminary budget.
Okay, so this is, this is an update for you as we go into the next date. We've got is the budget publication that goes into the newspaper. And then we've got the annual meeting on the 10th. And then we've got, and before that, on the 27th, we'll come back with another look for you to have kind of a preview of the annual meeting and the budget. So we've got one more look at this as we go into annual meeting on the 10th. I'm just going to run through quickly some of the change, some of the major changes since you last looked at this. So if we look, I'm going to look at revenues first. So we're up about $177,000 on total general fund revenues. A lot of that's due to the safety grant confirmation of those dollars coming in. We've had some slight changes up and down on some of the others and some reclassifications when we look at how the state wants us to classify some of those things for accounting purposes. They've done, came out with something at the end of June to give us some guidance on how they want us to classify some items. But, so we're up, we're at 5.5% as far as the increase from last year to this year in the preliminary budget. If we look at expend, on the expenditure side of things, that's fairly consistent. We've had some reclasses, as I mentioned before. DPI wants us to reclass some of the capital objects, which are line item 500, and really reclass those up under the 300. That's a statewide change that they're requiring all districts to make. So you'll see some swings up there as far as what those look like. Again, you know, taking into account the safety grant. And we adjusted up our transportation services and software contract that was up about $80,000 because we've got timing of some payments that are going to change. They're going to change from payments that would have happened this year that, and they'll be delayed into next year. Going through that, not a lot of other major changes. So expenditures are up about 4.4%. And then that leaves us with a deficit budget of about $205,000. So I'll just kind of, I'll kind of work through the committed and the unassigned fund balance summary. And so capital projects, that was board committed. That stands at $4,038,000 currently. And if you remember during the referendum, we're going to take about 3.5 million dollars out of that to pay for the high school project. So that'll leave our projected capital funds balance at about $538,000. Self-insurance funding, that reserve stays at the same $1.9 million. And then if we project out, where we're looking at this projected unassigned fund balance to wind up at the end of next year would be about $17.7 million. So that's within that board-approved guideline of 25% to 30% of expenditures. So any questions on the first page? Okay, moving on to the second page. This will give you a look at our historical valuations, the levy and the mill rate and the 1819 valuations and percentage change. Those things are things that will be finalized by DPI for school districts in October. We wind up pulling and looking at the county data to get our numbers here. So right now, that 1819 data is preliminary based on what we're projecting. So we're looking at the overall district valuation to go up about 3.6%. And so you can kind of see historically, 1314 where we were. And we've kind of motored along and we're seeing a bit of a dip. Not totally surprising, given the fact that housing starts, new housing starts are down nationwide. So we're kind of, we're kind of seeing that trend here as well. If you look at percentage change in levy, it's about 5.5%. And that brings the mill rate to 1052. So we've got a 1.82% change in the mill rate at this point. And then we've broken apart down at the bottom. You can see how that breaks apart per taxing entity. So City of Hudson was, is up about 3.5% preliminarily on this. And you can see that Village of North Hudson's about 2.31%. We're looking at new construction on a whole basis. And I say on a whole, on the whole basis because the town of St. Joe comprises about 70% of the district value. The other 30% resides with the school district of Somerset. And then in town of Troy, we have about 45% of the value. And the other 55 lies within the River Falls Township. So those pieces would have to be apportioned yet. And we don't, we'll have that in October when DPI releases those numbers. But if we look at new construction, it's down about 7, I had a number here. I can find it. I think we're down about 7, 7.5% over last year. So across all of those taxing entities, we had new construction of about $77.3 million. This year, we're estimated about $71.5 million. Okay, so any questions on the second page?
Tim, can you talk briefly? You know, some people may have concern about the projected budget deficit as you set the budget. You know, obviously not down to the dollar, but as we're, the auditors are actually here this week of where we're thinking we ended up FY '18.
Absolutely. So what we've done is included in this where we project out us ending and closing out 1718. So we should be, we'll be up about $600,000, $700,000. So rather than an 850 deficit, we're going to be, we're going to be above that. It won't be a deficit. We'll wind up with dollars adding in the fund balance. So that's why you'll see that projected unassigned fund balance go up. And it was at that 26.81%. If we were comparing it to the previous budget, which was June 18th, we're at about 25.02%. So that was standing at about 16.4. So now we're at 17.7.
So just long and short, we projected the end of the year having to dig about $850,000 into our fund balance to make ends meet. We're actually, not only are we not going to go into the $850,000 into fund balance, we're actually going to add to fund balance by about $600,000 or $700,000. So, you know, starting off the year to approve a budget at about a negative 205, you know, most people say, why do we want to start with a negative or a deficit budget? But, you know, it's trying to project worst-case scenarios and then, and then working our way through it. So Tim and his team have done an outstanding job projecting this thing down to within $100,000 to $200,000 would be like you having a $100,000 take-home income for the year. And on January 1st, project all of your expenditures for the entire year, including incidentals, within about $100. And so it, although it seems like big numbers when you start to compare the budget in general, it's very well, very well done. So a huge appreciation to Tim and his team.
Thank you. Yeah, that, great job because it makes me feel better when looking at a projected 205 deficit for, you know, going into the next budget year. But our projected fund balance is sitting at almost 27%. So we've got some cushion there.
Yeah, that's, and that certainly helps us when we go to bond. We qualify for lower rates. It gives us a lot of flexibility when we're dealing with budget issues. And if we were to see a decrease in state aid, it just, it just gives us an enormous amount of flexibility.
I know that when you first rolled out the projected budget, was it March?
Yeah, yep.
I think this is about the fifth time that we've seen this, that we've seen that general fund expenditures percent increase going down. And likewise, the payroll kind of flattening at about 4% increase compared to the previous year. And this is the year that we're having our catch-up with the TSS and so forth, so.
Yep, this is a big year.
I think that that's overall, you know, getting close, we're not quite to a zero increase in the mill rate, but it's one of our lower increases considering that we had the referendum increase two years ago.
Mr. President, so quick question, because I tend to be a bit Pollyanna-ish. I think what I just heard you say, Nick, is that there wasn't something odd that happened this year? That in general, we budget conservatively? And that, so it's not unusual that we beat our budget?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, you know, Tim and I talk about this quite a bit. It's, you know, you've got to be careful not to over, you know, over-budget your expenditures and really underestimate your revenues because, you know, but it's trying to find a balance. But a big piece that helps us, and I think Tim talked to it, is our self-insurance. You know, our self-fund insurance. If all of a sudden we come in much better than what we're anticipating, you know, that's, that's direct savings to the district versus another company.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've had, we've had a lot of success in that at this point and probably save in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 million a year versus being fully insured with an insurance company. And, you know, normally our, you know, if we look at variance between budget and actual, if we look at revenues, we're somewhere maybe in a half, a half a percent variance to what we budgeted. Expenses were probably somewhere between the 1.5%, the 2.5% in variance. So those are, those are pretty respectable variances to budget.
Any other questions? But otherwise, do you see anything happening in the next, whatever it is, 28 days or whatever, before our annual meeting on September 10th that's going to change this projected budget?
I don't, you know, we, we've got that July 1st estimate from the state. Now that, that one could swing up to six figures. I mean, we've seen it swing. But, you know, on the expenditure side of things, I don't see any major changes. And I, you know, and I think, you know, I guess we kind of, we always kind of cross our fingers between now and when the state comes out with the final aid numbers in October. But, you know, right now, I don't see any major changes. You know, and, you know, some of those are, you know, certainly we can adjust, you know? And we would look at, you know, can we take a little more out of fund balance? Yes, we could to adjust that if our, if our aid numbers were way down. If they come way up, well, hey, that's good news, then we have more options.
Right. But as we get closer to the target of late October, I mean, we get a better idea. But some of the stuff, we can't necessarily anticipate down to the penny on levy in September, what happens in October.
Right, yeah, the, all the, all the budget dollars are dependent. So what you get on the estimate on July 1st is prior to districts submitting all their final audit information. And we're, we're going through that audit, as Nick mentioned, this week. We've got our auditors here. And then those reports are sent in by audit firms in December normally. So there's a lot, a lot of data that isn't, that isn't final at this point. And the state, you know, does their best to give us an estimate in July. And then, like I say, all those things are, actually get finalized in October for us.
One other note that, you know, is a trend that hopefully will be reversing, but is the open enrollment out? That's our biggest actual increase on the expenditure side, up to a projected $1.1 million for the next school year, while our open enrollment in is 565, roughly half that. We're spending almost twice going out, it's what's coming in.
Yeah, and those are really rough numbers. We, we know that from experience that a lot of those, that when they preliminary the requests, the open enrollment in or out, there's a, there's a large percentage that never follow through. And so, and again, those numbers don't become finalized until towards the end of next year when the state comes out and says, okay, here's what, here's what happened, here's where the students went. So we try to do our best to estimate that one as well.
Any other questions or comments by board members? If not, then we move along to the much anticipated transportation update. Is that you, Andrea?
Okay, and I'm going to ask Linda to come up as well. So this is Linda Andert. She's our Assistant Director of Transportation. And she's going to talk a little bit about all of our efforts that have been made up to this point. But before we get to there, just wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about where we're at. So certainly, we all know and recognize that there were significant challenges last year with respect to transportation. And we have adopted new software. We have the new hire with Linda. And we're also working on new processes. So we're working on a number of fronts to try to address these issues. At the same time, we've had some challenges pop up as well. The software itself has proven very challenging to implement. They over-promised and under-delivered significantly to the point that now we had our attorney deliver a letter of basically breach of contract, non-compliance with the contract today. So we are having continuing issues with respect to the Traversa software. They definitely sold us a product that they had not yet developed. For example, we have tablets that we had been talking about. I think we even talked to you guys about it, where each bus would have a tablet on the bus and then students could have a, like a key card of some sort to swipe in and out of the bus so that we could have a tracking system for them. Um, they notified us about a month ago, six weeks ago, that they're just not ready, that they, even though it's part of our contract, that they, they don't have it ready, and they don't, they can't give us any kind of estimated date for which it will be ready. Um, so that means we have to come up with a completely different system, which Linda's gonna talk about, um, to try to track students. And so that's an example of a significant hurdle that we're trying to overcome as we're getting closer to the start of the school year. Um, so we're working on that. Um, so while these challenges with the software have been significant, uh, it, and it has limited our ability to proactively problem-solve routing, uh, Linda has truly done a Herculean effort to get us to where we are today. She has done a wonderfully fantastic job, and I feel that because of her efforts, that we'll have a more successful rollout this year, um, again, in spite of the challenges associated with the limitations of the Traversa program. Um, a couple of other points I wanna emphasize is that, um, we think with Linda being in-house, that we have a much better handle of who's going to be on the buses, the actual ridership of the buses, which you know was a big kerfluffle last year, uh, where we had a lot more kids on the buses than we had, um, space necessary, or with our, um, lower capacities. So, uh, we feel that we have a better handle on that. We also have been working really hard on communications, uh, that we sent out a letter, uh, was it last week, uh, or two weeks ago, um, to parents, just kinda giving them a courtesy heads-up of, this is where we're looking at having your stop be. Um, we'll be sending out more information shortly about their actual stop. Uh, we received certainly mixed, mixed feedback, um, with respect to that letter, but we're trying to do numerous communications to try to have better, um, or have the parents have a better understanding of where their stop's gonna be, why it's gonna be there, and we're gonna give the why next week, um, and continue to work through those efforts with, um, uh, the communication, and then again, continuing to problem-solve with Traversa as they are struggling to meet our expectations. Um, and then Linda's gonna give us some more information now with respect to some other efforts that she's working on, and if you wanna push up the button, it will make your mic live, there you go.
Okay, we've done some changes this year that I wanted to implement, just because we have lots of cul-de-sacs throughout our district. Um, for elementary students, we will not go in cul-de-sacs if their student is not walking up to two tenths of a mile, and for, uh, middle school and high school, up to three tenths of a mile. Um, that kinda is a block and a half for elementary and two and a half blocks for, um, the older kids. Um, that is a change, we've had bus stops that we've had the driver continually make all year long, even though the student doesn't ride, um, so we've also implemented that if the bus's stop isn't used for twenty consecutive days, that we will drop the stop, and we gave the option of reactivating the stop in two to three days if needed. A lot of students play sports seasonally, so seasonally, they're not using the bus, we just wanna, you know, save time and save effort if the bus isn't gonna be used. Um, last year, uh, we had thirty-three buses that we were using, this year, we are going to use thirty-five, we're gonna start with the thirty-five, only because we've lost, because of the school eight-minute change, now the high school starts before the middle school, so the shuttling doesn't work like it did in years past, so we need more time in between, um, middle school dismissal and elementary dismissal in order to make things work. And we also don't wanna do again what happened last year, I put everyone that was registered on the buses, and I came up with approximately seventy-five students per bus, which is way too many. Um, most of the students probably will not ride, but they registered just to say that, you know, I'm registered, so it's kind of a guessing, guessing game right now, so I would rather guess on not having a start like last year's start, and then we can always downsize from there. Um, since we don't have, uh, the swipe cards, we are color coding, um, pages that we'll put on kids. I will have, instead of bus numbers for the elementary students, we have the duck bus and the troll bus and all kinds of lovely things that we're gonna put in the window, and the signs in the bus window are gonna be green for the frog bus, and the student will have bus tags that, uh, we will be giving out, uh, at meet the teacher night. Um, the, the card itself has the address on it only because the teacher needs to know who the card belongs to. When the parent puts it on their backpack, they'll take the address out, so it does not have time and it does not have name, so there is no information that would know that the student is at a specific stop at a specific time. So hopefully, visible means of identifying which bus they get on will help. Um, the postcards will be going out approximately the week of the twentieth, and we'll be mailing them and getting the drivers to practice their routes approximately then. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, anyone for our transportation folks?
I have one quick one.
Yes.
So, uh, there'll be a, a name and a color on the card and on the bus?
Yes.
Okay.
We thought the redundancy would just make it much more easily viewed and accomplished, like, so the tickets last year were not liked by the teachers because each kid just had a white ticket, and it was really tough to figure out with the numbers of the buses and all of that, who should go where, when. And so now by color coding and using trolls and ducks and all that, we thought that that would be a more effective way to, um, do it.
I think the redundancy is very good.
You can see it across the playground, that's, you belong on the frog bus, let's go. And then it also helps with the communication of multifamily-type things, because the, the student will have two cards, but it'll help the teacher know that, to get a schedule from that parent of, you know, this could happen, this could happen, and these are the choices, and this is our schedule as of now, so hopefully, the communication piece with the parent is better.
Mr. President? Sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Um, are we following the plan from a couple of years ago, and I talked before the construction, where more buses to the back of, of the building, less cars, I mean, is that still the plan, or has that changed?
Um, I think, less cars, my understanding is that's an accurate reflection, is that there's fewer vehicles back there. Um, the buses, uh, um, my understanding from last year was that we have had more than the thirteen slots of buses go back, but more of a, um, wave process with those buses, just because of the tight timelines, um, between the ends and, um, end of the day for high school, middle school, and then elementary, accomplishing all of it, um, has proven challenging.
Carrie, did you have a point?
With the actual tags, will, will there be like a perforated tag that the parents can tear off?
There'll be a what?
Will it be like a perforated tag that they, they, they tear off?
No, it's, it's just, we'll just take the, we've, uh, I've let the schools-
So it won't be like this?
It'll look like that.
With this information?
Yes, but, um, we've talked to parent groups at each individual school and let them know that we'd need some help, uh, putting them together, and every school came up with parents that would be willing to help for a day to cut the tags and put them in the sleeves.
Good. And the principals had some great ideas as we were talking with them about, um, how to more effectively track our kids, but not, um, make it as cumbersome as it was with the tickets last year. Before we, as soon as we get the tablets, we'll get the tablets and we'll get it up and running, but as hard as we push, we don't have any kind of estimated timeline.
Heather, did you have a-
Yeah, quick question, so, I, I think it's helpful for us to be really clear about policies, so if we're hearing from parents, we know when we can say, you know, that's still within the policy versus that sounds like a problem. So, so are there, are there times when, what, what kinds of things, when we hear from parents, are the things that you would say, yes, please encourage them to call me, because that's the stuff that we need to figure out, knowing that we don't want every, we don't wanna encourage every disgruntled parent to call you, I mean, so when we can, just circle back with the policy, that's appropriate, but what are the things that you're hearing that are actually good to hear, because it helps you problem-solve and fix things that might be a little bit kitty-wampus?
Sure, um, well, how I assign bus stops is a lot of what parents have questions on, and the two tenths for the elementary and the three tenths for the, um, high school, middle school students is my guideline, and it's better to have just a guideline by distance than defined other things. Yes, there could be a big corner out there, um, yes, there could be a pedophile, I mean, there is things that come up that I would definitely check into, um, but, um, it comes up, and the bus stop, if I have a choice, goes where the youngest student is. Especially with the four-year-olds being on the buses this year, uh, that's something new, uh, the pre-K fours will be riding the regular buses either into school or home from school, they'll shuttle before routes from the daycare or facility that they're at to their school, where they'll get on the bus and ride home with their siblings.
And I would say, um, certainly, we're aware of some of the chatter that's out there, I'm a parent in the district as well, so I'm on those type of sites, um, watching the comments, um, and one comment that was brought up quite a bit was that, like, elementary kids have, in the same family, have a different stop location as compared to high school, middle school. This is a good change, because now, for the first time in I don't know how many years, we are looking at, um, not mirroring the routes necessarily, because in the past, it, the high, the elementary routes were exactly the same as the middle school, high school routes, whether there were kids that there or not. So now we're adjusting that, um, so that there may be a different stop location for that middle school, high school student as compared to the elementary student, but again, I think that's probably a good move in terms of efficiency, um, with, at the same time, making sure that we're in compliance with the two tenths and three tenths expectations.
And, and something that also changed is you have a high school, middle school, like you do, it does a high school route in the morning, and then it does a Holton route, and then in the afternoon, it does a high school and a Holton, well, that really doesn't work, because the Holton is way out there, so if I have a bus that's way out there and can make it to another school, I efficiently try to manipulate it so they work better together. So you may have a bus that does a high school route and an elementary school, a middle school route in the afternoon, and maybe in another elementary school, which is kinda good for the drivers, because they get to know the district, so they could help each other.
One other thing too, in the, um, something that's proven challenging with respect to the elementary boundaries is the fact that, uh, like Willow, um, there's one attendance area, we, the, two attendance areas that serve three schools, and so we have to get three different buses to tho, that location. Once we redraw, or reset the boundaries, um, for nineteen twenty, that won't be an issue, um, to the extent it is now, so like, we have Willow, Rivercrest, and Rock, all serving the same area with different buses.
I know one of the big changes last year, well, part of it was the earlier start time of school compared to this year, is, is much lighter, but, um, was that parents putting the onus on the parents to call in about registering their kid for the bus, and if they didn't call by a certain date, the assumption was they weren't riding. How was that process working this year compared to previous year?
I think we need to continue to do education, about half registered this year, uh, which makes me very nervous. Um, most of the stops in the populated area would exist, but I haven't left a lot of room to take on a lot more, that's why the addition of the two buses to leave a little wiggle room, and then whittle it down from there.
Okay, but do, will we be, like, following up with parents?
Yes, and we're-
Which wasn't done last year with, when it wasn't in-house.
We've been doing multiple communicate, communications, we've been trying to highlight it on the different building websites, um, we're gonna be sending out another communication next week in advance of sending out the postcards, um, we'll also be communicating out about a Google form that we're gonna have available, so if changes in transportation need to occur, they can submit that electronically, which is a lot easier than in the past, um, my understanding was that they would call Safeway, they'd make a note, and something would happen to it, or not, um, and so we're gonna have much more of a systemi, systematic type of process to handle all of these requests.
Yep, and we've also started a forum, Tracy's has a forum on the transportation, we have a separate email, uh, box that, uh, concerns from parents are coming into, so they don't get lost in my general email that I can deal with them, or at least answer them direct, that it may not be immediate, but, uh, I will get back to you, and then I can email and answer, so they know that I did get it and I did look at it.
Heather, did you have something?
Yep, is there a possibility in the future, um, to make bus registration part of registration?
We did that previously, and it didn't go well, so this was an effort to take it away from the regular registration, because, um, they weren't filling it out correctly, and it was, um, uh, not processed right, is my understanding with Skyward.
Yeah, it would be good if we could do that, and right now, honestly, we're limited by Skyward, our student information system, it creates actually a more cumbersome process than separating them, but you're right, it would be best if it could just be one streamlined process where you start at the beginning, you get notifications that you're completing everything properly, we'll continue to look at that, um, Skyward is going through some changes, and they're gonna be launching a new platform that may or may not be able to help, but there are some things too, we think we can do, just in terms of linking, even though they might still have to be two separate processes, linking them together, so at least the communication is aligned.
So there's a prompt during that process to click here to do your bus registration, I think that would be-
Exactly.
And it's been evolving the spring and summer too, so as, like, I signed up for registration, I gave some feedback, I'm like, this was confusing, so let's fix this or adjust this, and, um, so we're trying to be responsive there.
Great, great.
And again, we're trying to keep, um, be aware of what's out there, but at the same time, knowing that some issues can't be resolved, um, based on, um, historical information in certain situations, but we do our best, and we feel we're in compliance with the board policies in this, um, case, and we're trying hard, even with the limitations of the Traversa software, to have a much more successful rollout, and that's our goal.
But at this time, there's not, you're not looking for additional resources from the board or different policy changes at this point to handle what we need to?
Nope.
All right. Any further questions? All right, very good, thank you for coming, thank you for the report. And now, I'll entertain a motion, um, pursuant to the wording regarding expenditures for our consent agenda.
Mr. President? I move approval of the consent items, and that the Chief Financial and Operations Officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of thirteen million, five hundred twenty-two thousand, eight hundred sixty dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes, consent agenda items are approved as well as the expenditures, now we move on to consideration of Board Policy four thirty-two and four thirty-three. Um, this Board Policy, is this technically still first reading, or not, this is still preliminary?
We have not done first reading, but you do have a community member that'd like to speak ahead.
Yes, I saw that, I've got my notes, so, Mr. Moss, you wanna come up now? Mr. Moss attended our work session three weeks ago, when this topic was first broached.
Um, so for starters, I'd like to say thank you for the time and effort that you guys put into being board members, I understand it is a very, uh, tasking responsibility with not a lot that gives back to you, and so thank you for that. Um, the few meetings that I have been able to attend where this, uh, policy consideration has been on the agenda, um, I understand that you put a lot of effort into it, so thank you for that. Uh, my name is David Moss, and I am a community member here in Hudson, I am a staff member as, uh, going into my sixth year at EP Rock Elementary, and I am a parent, as of last year, um, in the school district, my daughter is, uh, going into first grade this, this following year, um, and I'm a parent that has utilized the current practice of boundary exceptions. Um, for where we currently live, we would be Rivercrest, and I wanted that opportunity to have my daughter come to EP Rock with me. Um, and so, my purpose for, for speaking to you tonight is to, um, to hope that you will consider the multiple reasons for why boundary exception reason, or, uh, requests happen. Um, when I first read through the first draft that was presented to you at the work session last, last, uh, month, um, I was concerned with the, the great reduction in reasons that a parent could request, and when I read through the, uh, agenda documents for this evening, I was very excited to see that there was some additional, uh, verbiage put in there to consider other reasons. Um, specifically, uh, no, excuse me, option number seven, the ability to accommodate familial preferences, including but not limited to staff, preferences, school location, childcare arrangements. Um, when I asked myself, why did I actually request that for my daughter, convenience definitely popped into my mind, and I think when you consider for parents requesting it, that comes up a lot, um, there is a convenience piece to it, however, when I really- However, when I really thought about it, that was not at the core of my reasoning. And it was really hard for me to put into words why I requested that. And I guess the best way that I can and express it is, is like a family business. If any of you have ever had the opportunity to work in a family business, there's a certain pride that comes with working with your family members. Um, as I was coming out of high school, I had the opportunity to work in the business with my father. My brother has worked with my father for over fifteen years. And as my father retired this past June, uh, you ask him what the highlights of his career were. And one of the things that pops up immediately is being able to work with his children. Um, and that is the pride that I was able to feel this year in having my daughter in my school and being able to see her throughout the day and see her highlights and see her struggles and, and be a part of not only my family, but my work family. Um, as educators, it is really hard to separate that feeling of family with who you work with every single day, the students and the staff. And so it is very much a family business. By able, by being able to request that our, our students come to our building with us, it allows us to bring our work families and our, our real families together and not have to choose in between. Um, when we think about the, um, things that we do outside of the eight to four workday, all of the, the community building opportunities, uh, there are many times that if, if my daughter was not at EP Rock with me, I would have been having to choose. Do I go and support my work family in that community event? Or do I go and support my real family and go to the other school? Um, I think you would all agree that by having staff members at those community events, it only builds our community culture within our schools. And so by allowing, uh, staff members to mesh the two families together, it only improves the community culture that we have within our buildings. In informal discussions with staff members at Rock over the last six months, uh, since this has come apart, come, come up with the boundary redrawing and with the update to the practice and making a formal policy, um, through informal conversations, it has come about that approximately one-third of the staff at EP Rock has taken that opportunity to have their students come through EP Rock. Now, some of those, it happened by, by the fact that they lived within the boundary and some of them happened because, um, we utilized the boundary exception process. But I think it speaks volumes that that many staff members wanted their children to be in school with them. Um, with that being said, I also know staff members that very specifically did not want their children to be in school because it is a different dynamic. Um, being the media specialist at EP Rock is very different than being a classroom teacher where my child, I would never have to teach them and they would be in a different section. As a media specialist, I have to have my child sit in front of me as a student and be her teacher. And that led to some very challenging times, but I would never have traded it for a second. Um, it is something that has brought us closer together, definitely. Um, now, staff have taken jobs and built houses in specific boundary areas simply to have this opportunity. And now that the redrawing is happening, I know of multiple staff members that are going to be concerned that if they get redrawn out of their current building, they are going to be looking to this policy. They're going to be looking to utilize the boundary exception because they want that opportunity to have their kids with them. Um, in previous meetings, I know there's been comments that, uh, they've heard, that you as board members have heard from parents that they are tax, tax-paying members just like staff members and there should be no priority given to staff members, uh, because they pay their taxes just like everyone else. And to that, I say, um, you know, we as a district and you as a board are looking for ways to attract and hire and maintain, um, staff, quality staff members. And I think that this could be a benefit, a perk that you can, uh, look to, to market to people to bring into the district. Um, through conversations with parents, I have very, uh, heard on multiple occasions, the exact opposite of that coin, that parents feel strongly that this should be a perk for staff members. They didn't see no reason why it shouldn't be. So for every voice that you hear on one side, there is always a voice on the other side of that argument. Uh, when we presented the comparable districts that, um, and their policies and there was only one district that did give a priority to staff, to that I say, again, it's something that can make Hudson stand out. I think it's something that can, uh, give us that edge above our neighboring districts to look to hire, um, quality staff members. Um, and finally, when I looked through the criteria in tonight's draft and I read criteria number six, their request, that the request would enable students to attend the same school as the student siblings already attending the requested school. It, to me, that means that you understand the importance of family being together. And so if you feel that it's a priority for a student to attend with a sibling, to me, it would only make sense that you would think it would be a priority for them to attend with a parent. Um, the family being together has a very powerful piece in a child's education and their upbringing. Um, now, if, as you discuss and as you work through this, if you really feel like it is not a weight direction you want to go to give true priority to staff, that's totally understandable. Um, my request is that you do look at the openness of the reasons. Uh, because again, that first draft that was presented where it was only for academic reasons was very concerning to me, um, because it would be very hard to, to give strictly academic reasons. Um, this is a, a world of people and a world of connections in the education world. And that's the reason that, um, many people request these boundary exceptions. So for me to strictly say I have an academic reason for my daughter and my upcoming son, I would not be able to probably provide that. Um, but I go back to the pride that I felt and that I want to be able to continue to feel in working with my daughter and my son and having that opportunity. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming. All right. Is this Andrea then?
Yes. Um, I think the, as you look through the drafts, so based on the feedback that I received at the last, uh, work session, um, asked the attorneys to come up with some modifications. And I think there's significant modifications between the two versions. I would say less so certainly for the first one. Um, it was really, the only question you had in four thirty-two was the word, uh, revision of the word maintenance. Um, and so they have done that, uh, just by saying racial, ethnic diversity of student population among buildings. So really, the heart of the issue is four thirty-three and where the board wants to go. To me, the threshold question is, what do you want us to have for boundary exceptions? Do you want a more open process or do you want a more narrow process? Until we know that direction, it's tough to come up with, um, too many options. So if, um, so that to me is a big threshold question we have to come up, or have to address. And then from there, um, it's six and seven. Um, I, um, how we want to consider those pieces. The others, the one through six, we did clarify too, that it's, um, the criteria are to be considered. It's not all of them have to apply. So we did adjust the language based on your feedback there too. Um, and that we did, uh, make the revision where once it's granted, it can, it can be a continuing basis. It doesn't have to be an annual basis. So that would in and of itself make it a broader and more, a bigger pool of, of students who would be eligible or that would be on boundary exceptions. The issue, it's, it truly is, um, when it comes to number six, number seven, um, where the board wants to go. I think number six certainly makes sense. But even with number six and number seven, I would say, uh, it's always ha- it always has to have the, that's, class and that section still has to have space available. Like we can't be, in my mind, I mean, again, you guys can give us a different direction, but it would be tough to be adding staff in a building to accommodate requests, um, simply because they may have a sibling at that building. So if we were to go in that direction, then we would really blow up, the boundary exception numbers and make our boundary resetting process more challenging if it was that broad.
So now you're just, right now, again, this is not first reading.
Nope.
This is, the change is based on the hour and twenty-five minutes that we spent on this at the last work session.
And we did, um, provide additional samples too. You guys asked for some non-comparable district samples and so that was included within the packet. She did include the O'Clare one, which you already had received, but beyond.
What's the executive summary of the other four? I, I breezed through them. I didn't take a line by line and compare word for word among the four school districts. But one was O'Clare. I'm just curious, you know, also why those, like Fort Atkinson was one, Germantown and.
They just, I just asked for a variety of samples, um, so that, uh, that you guys could get an idea of what other districts are doing. Um, so that's all. Um, and I think they're ones that they work closely with.
Like O'Clare has twelve elementary schools.
Yes.
They don't have open boundaries. So that you can send your kids any school and just show up first day of school.
Right.
You know, with, with your kid. So they have twelve boundaries for each of their elementary schools. How do they handle it then? Do they allow exceptions?
They allow for exceptions, but they don't, um, have, I mean, they're limited in the application of that and they're in the process of revisiting their policy as well. And so they didn't want to talk too specifically to me, um, about, uh, their process because it's under review. But they have run into similar issues where expectations get built up, à la Hastings, à la even Stillwater, which does give staff preference. Um, it just, and we've seen it this year, that if you grant a lot and then a year is full in a particular building, it, it causes really, you know, a lot of hard feelings, um, if they can't get the requests that they've been relying upon.
Okay. So it's just open for discussion?
Yes.
All right. And, and in my initial comment on this, because I want to get input of all board. This is a board decision and administration certainly has its recommendation. And I do look at this, try to look at it from the eyes of a, a parent as well. But, um, I have, I have just a concern about having, once allowed in, making it kind of permanent. Because I could see, this is how we get into having, um, skewed numbers for balancing issues. And then all of a sudden, there's a particular school that has full sections, but they're only full because they had, you know, eight boundary exceptions requested and carried over from the prior year. I think it provides us better flexibility if we did, uh, require it to be an annual thing so that if we don't, if we run into, you know, balance issues, um, because at the difference between grades two and three, we have a shift in the number of kids per section. And so, um, you know, that has an impact and of course, population shift as well. It, it might create more of a headache, but I'd like to hear the pros and cons of that aspect.
And I would say that Hastings is the case study for that because they had a very generous boundary exception, um, process. Uh, were having issues like this because they were ongoing. And so they made it an annual basis and they said it dropped dramatically where they have a handful on a, because it's not a year over year, over year, you know, they have to apply every year. Um, the, the lack of certainty for the parents caused them to just not apply for it. So that to me is that threshold question of do you want it to be broad or do you want it to be narrow? And then we can develop, um, other language too, based on that guidance. But that would be, you know, helpful to. Well, and to that point, are there, I wonder if there are schools whose policy requires annual application? I'm thinking out loud, but then gives preference to those students who were previously open enrolled. So that as a parent who's interested, um, you know, you have a better chance at staying in the school where your kid is. But, and you know that if kids move into that attendance area and there's not room, there's no guarantee that your kid is going to be there.
That was prioritized in one of these.
And yes, so number six would have, would address that. But I want to be careful too, though, to make sure we, um, because open enrollment, it's a different issue. So this would just be, yep. Boundary exception, using the wrong word, yes, yes. Nope, just, yep, yep.
One of these schools did have that criterion.
That you got priority if you had previously had a boundary exception and attended that school. That would seem logical to me.
Other board member comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, tying into six and seven, uh, to what Dave was saying about just the family, going back to what Erin had said earlier with the mental health grant, um, I mean, she stated, we were asking teachers to perform very stressful jobs and they often have empathy fatigue. So offering this one perk, I mean, we, we do pay for performance and nobody else had done that. This does exist in other districts, so I think it's reasonable that it's a priority. I mean, one of the priorities.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Bruce.
Let me go through the, um, the analysis where we're working with the different teams across, you know, that are doing the review, right? Are we going to do a survey at any point in time?
For?
Uh, you know, once we get through, you know, kind of the community engagement process here on this, will there be any type of survey that will be, you know, getting feedback from the community at a bigger scale as opposed to just the, those that are participating in the engagement process?
On the bo- on the bound- you say the boundaries?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, one of the things we were going to talk about at the next, there at the work session is, is the plan of, of what that's going to look like in order to get feedback this fall from parents, from community members, from staff, from students on a variety of issues, potentially using the Gallup tools that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, and potentially setting that up to either be an annual, um, thing that we do or every other year type of thing, depending on the cost associated with it. Uh, so, uh, but one of the things that, you know, that, uh, those tools, as we're starting to review them, are more general. I mean, it's really hard to specifically target, how do you feel about boundary exceptions? Or how do you feel about the way the boundaries went? But it will talk about, you know, how, how the district's gotten feedback on things and along those lines. But, um, yeah, I mean, I, our, our goal is to continue to seek out a community feedback and community engagement. And that's the process that we're getting ready to undertake as we, um, head into this, uh, this school year.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess I was just curious if there was a way to pose that question to the community at large and, you know, see how they feel, right? I mean, and I recognize at some level, you just have to make a decision, right? And that's sometimes tough, um, particularly when you're dealing with situations where, yeah, I mean, you, you know, you'd love to accommodate everyone, right? Um, but I think the challenge that, that we're seeing right now is just simply the location in which people continue to move and, and what that does to stretch us a school or two out. So I, I, I think anytime you're getting into this type of discussion, you're going to run into these instances and it, and, you know, ultimately a decision just needs to be made and move forward.
I would say too, knowing that we're resetting boundaries going into next year, if we have a very liberal boundary exception process, I would expect hundreds of boundary exception requests going into next year. Um, because everyone's, who is going to have to move to another building based on that boundary reset is going to want to stay at their existing. So how are we going to start handling all those?
Again, then, just one other quick question, I guess, um, to that end, do you look at employees and maybe even shifting employees from one school to another? And, and is that potentially part of this as well to see where they're at? If they're going to be impacted, could that be a potential change for them as well? And, you know, not, I'm not saying everybody would necessarily jump at that because they might love their building.
Right.
But it could be an alternative or an option to explore.
And the timing would work out well because my understanding of the timing is that we would have the new boundary reset pro- or boundaries approved in December. Our staffing process starts January, February. And so as part of that process, um, we expect it to be very significant this year. And, um, we have in the past, um, had a survey sent out to all staff. And so they could, in that survey, um, indicate their preference to change buildings. And there's kind of like an order of priority. Um, so we already do that and I would expect to do that again. And I, again, with the resetting process, I would expect, um, a, a much higher level of participation than we have previously.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes, Sue.
One comment, one question. The, um, uh, are looped classes affected by the potential of attendance boundaries changing?
As far as, oh, you mean, we do have some looping that's happening at Rock. And then we actually have one teacher that's looping at Prairie. Um, yeah, it very, it very well could, it could impact those kids. I think, you know, as Andrea brought up, um, we have a couple, a couple of things on the docket here. Um, I think if we can agree that we wouldn't overload a class for a boundary exception, then we can definitely become more liberal and, and what grants those requests. So for example, um, you, you could give priority or familiar, familial preferences if, as long as people understood that we won't overload a class in order to grant those requests. I mean, you could give staff preferences as long as people understand. We, and, and if the board says basically, you know, the, you know, we just won't overload. we just won't overload to grant those, um, then I think, yeah, we can, we can then start to rank order kinda, you know, what, you know, as we go down the list, as we create a waiting list or, or whatnot, um, you know, what that looks like. Uh, the, the other piece, and, and Andrew hit on it, is, um, we are going to have two issues coming up with the boundary resets. Is one, um, the board's gonna have to make a decision on, uh, what their stance is gonna be as far as students having to abide by the new boundaries, or families having to abide by the new boundaries. You know, is that going to be something that, um, they're gonna require all, all kids? Is that something they're gonna allow fifth, you know, fourth graders going into fifth grade to stay in their elementary? Or if they're gonna allow boundary exceptions, we're gonna have to come up with some type of process that's gonna say, okay, based on, um, the, the number of kids that are assigned to that building on X date, there's no space. And all of a sudden, the, the start of the school year, there might be five empty spots, but at least at that date. Because otherwise what happens is, okay, two kids move here out of this building, which then opens up two kids in this building. I mean, it'll be a never-ending process for us, trying to balance classes out and trying to do staffing. I mean, we have to kinda have a, a line in the sand.
That's why the suggestion is the July thirty-one.
Yes. So the other piece is, you know, we have a lot of people on boundary exceptions, and would we continue to honor those? Because if the board is going to take the route of families have to move with their boundaries change, it would be very difficult then to say, but if you're on, already on a pre-existing boundary exception, you get to stay. You know, that you're gonna have some questions of fairness there. So, um, those are kind of the different components. So we have this, which will be kind of our ongoing process. But we are going to need the decision also as it surrounds the resetting of the tenant's boundaries, you know. For the reset of the tenants' boundaries, this is how we're going to deal with it. And then every year moving forward after this, this is now how we're gonna go. And I think it's a good idea that obviously, uh, we try to work through this over the next two months, so that the public understands what your direction is prior to the final setting of the boundaries.
I, I just wanna finish with my com- comment then. Um, and then I just wanted to say that, um, I did like David's point about, um, possibly the idea of student, uh, children being in the same school as a teacher, parent, um, as an, you know, an attractive force for hiring teachers. I, I thought that was a good point. Um, so I'll just end with that.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Back to what you had said and Nicky alluded to as well, I, obviously that's, it's not ideal for families to have to reapply annually, but I would be in support of that, to have it be a more limited, hopefully, option.
So, so something that I would just, I would ask, and this is where we need feedback from the board, is if we went to an annual reapplication process essentially, at a certain date, so let's say all of a sudden there were three open spots at, let's call it Prairie in second grade. And going into third grade, we had three move-ins. Do the three move-ins automatically bump out the three boundary exceptions? And just, just so, you know, people understand that, that, that could be the case, because we wouldn't keep the boundary exceptions in necessarily and overload the classes. I just, I just wanna make sure that's what, you know, that's what that looks like. Well, class size go up, so you'd have to have a lot of move-ins. But, you know, so I guess the, you know, it, I'm, I just, I think that's kind of just something that people have to be ready for, because that will be.
Right. Well, that's why I wouldn't.
Then, and then I, we'll create a process, which it'll be random. Or it'll be based on, the order of the, order of the preferences. So if you say, okay, it's siblings in the building first. If you say staff member, you know, whatever we rank order those preferences, and then if we still have a tie, then we do, somewhere we do other things, it'd be a random, be a random drawing.
Heather.
In response to your question, my assumption had been, as we've been talking, that it would be a reset. I mean, I think to me, previously I was having a hard time with this tension between parents reasonably saying, you've got space, why wouldn't you let us do this? In the years when there are space, but also wanting to be mindful about the problem we don't want to create, which is this imbalance we have right now. So it, it seems like the, the happy medium there would be an annual process where we reset as if everyone was going to their home school, see where the numbers are, and then see how much space we have that year for boundary exceptions. So I think, I mean, that, that to me feels like a good, a good middle ground. Um, I think the question's still around, and then are there priorities? And I, I actually like the idea of including perhaps a number six. I mean, if we're talking about family connections, is that as a sibling already attending or a parent working at the requested school? I mean, if we're talking, if we're speaking to family connections, that might be, that might be less, um, controversial than giving preference to staff. I mean, it's, it's, it's just playing into that family, um, bucket of exceptions. But, I mean, to me, that feels like the good medium would be, there is a hard reset every year. So yes, if three kids move in, that means there might not be room in that school for your third grader next year, even though there was room last year.
Or like I would say, a common thing would be third grade, where we do increase our class size guidelines, um, from eighteen twenty-two to twenty-two twenty-seven. We often go down in sections in third grade. So that could, if we put, yes, we would have fewer spots potentially open for boundary exceptions. That model would be consistent with what Hastings has gone to.
Bob.
Um, I, I hadn't considered what Bruce had brought up about actually teachers moving schools potentially, so that's interesting. Um, I do agree with Heather about, uh, changing the language of that one to make it not on its own. Transparent still, but, uh, less of, uh, you know, smacking of favoritism or what have you. I think we also have to be, if we're doing it on an annual, I think it's wise. I think with all the new housing potentially south of the hockey arena, and the change, and the number of houses that were built in the golf course, and we have to be aware of the quick changes that can happen. And, and protect ourselves and be honest with the, uh, with the residents with expectations and, uh, parents. And, and keeping it making sense. So I do like, I was, I was trying to be very fair in saying, wow, we, we have to avoid the, you know, employee preference, but I am kind of switching around on that and saying there should be some soft language to include that in with the familial.
Right. I think it just can be all about, um, you know, ranking your, your priorities. And if we made that a higher priority again, it's a way of distinguishing. You go through, if, if we have four priorities and then people are, and we still have more applications than spots, then it's gonna have to go to random. But getting back to Nick's question too about, you know, we're going through a very elaborate process here to get public input on these new boundaries. What's the feeling of the board as far as, are, are we gonna grandfather in all of the boundary, the hu- over hundred boundary exceptions that have been made? Or are we going to enforce what all these citizens are working hard to do? And that is resetting the boundaries.
Yeah, Mr. President, so Heather, I think we said it on that one session. And, and their experience was, you can't grandfather. You grandfather, you're, you're just creating a real, Tracy, I think you were in that session as well. You create a, a real mess. And it only, it only just continues to snowball. So I think, you know, that there's some good best practices out there to learn from. I think we need to be really mindful of that. Uh, I would, I would hate to create more of a problem, you know.
Heather.
Bruce, you're referencing the, the session at the state school board convention, right?
Correct, yeah.
We were learning from other districts that have been through the process.
Yep, yep.
Fourth grade, yeah.
Fourth grade going into fifth, yeah.
But otherwise, no, they did not, um, grandfather anybody in.
And that's what our, our, um, consultants has said also, because they, I mean, they're doing this with multiple districts. That tends to be a pretty common grandfather clause, but that doesn't necessarily guarantee that the siblings get to stay. So you could have a fourth grader going into fifth, and a first grader going into second, and the first grader going into second has to move regardless. And the fourth grader going to fifth, either they can move, if you wanna keep the two children together, or they can stay. And then you, you would just have two different elementary schools, you'd have kids at.
Whether it's open enrollment or boundary exemptions, exceptions, we always give families an option to keep their kids together.
Yeah, and I, so to that point, uh, with point six, and I would agree with Heather and Bob on this as well, that, you know, along with siblings, it should say, or a parent in the school. Um, but to me, siblings would be first, you know, because it gets really difficult for parents to have to have kids at two different schools. Um, so I'd say sibling first, then parent second, and, and then hopefully there would be other, other means in which we could accommodate.
You mean staff parent as being a second to, to sibling?
Yep.
Yes.
And to clarify, I think when we're talking about this recommendation about, about fifth grade, um, grandfathering, it's not, we're not just talking about kids with boundary exceptions, we're talking about all fifth graders.
This would be all kids. Yep, yep. This would be all, all of our fourth going into fifth graders. So, and, and I think the, the one thing we're gonna have to get from the board is you're going, we're gonna have to rank order these preferences. Otherwise, what's gonna happen is, everybody's gonna fall under a preference, and we'll be right back to where we are, where there really is no preference. It's gonna be a, a random. So we're gonna have, you're gonna have to either say, okay, um, if there's siblings, you know, if there's a sibling in the building, that trumps staff, or staff trumps sibling. You know, I mean, there, there, we have to have a rank order, so that when we finally get down to something, let's say we have three kids for one spot. They all have siblings in the, you know, they're at the same level on the list, then we can do the, you know, the random drawing. But what we don't wanna get in is, okay, you know, I'm a staff member, I don't have any siblings in the building, or, and my child doesn't have any siblings in the building. This person has three siblings in the building, and this person has childcare arrangements that need to be taken care of. And now all of them are thrown into the same random drawing. You know, I think we'll have fewer random drawings if we prioritize the list.
You know, to that point, Nick, as I look at the list, I mean, it feels like we should be leading with two and three. Because two and three are saying, if, if we, if not these two, then nothing else. You know, we have to, we have to be able to accommodate from a space standpoint without adding. And then number one would drop below, and then what we have to figure out is, is there a rank order there of, of the rest of the, and here are the reasons that we might, that would be a reasonable request for, for an exception. The one that I am struggling with still, because I feel like it's nebulous enough that a parent could grab it and make it, is, is four. Significantly benefit. Like, does, does that need to be there? I kind of feel like that one could be taken out.
Most likely, the way we've defined the others now, we could probably eliminate number four.
And regarding number five, is that just for the remainder of the school year, or going on?
Well, we do have a, other language about continuing for the rest of that school year. So we'll, we're gonna have the application process for the next school year, and then we'll have the, like, the mid-year move, transfer, like, during that school year. Where the presumption is that if they're already in the numbers, they'll stay in the numbers if they move mid-year. For that one year. It wouldn't be a continuing.
So curious question would be, this would only be for kids that wanna stay from year to year.
Year to year.
Could that one be removed? I think it's addressed in something else with a mid-year move that could maybe be removed.
I'm just saying, you know, if you, you build a new house outside of your attendance boundary or something like that, okay, you move in in January. You're allowed to stay at your existing intent, you know, existing school for the rest of the year.
Yes.
But then if you wanna continue to stay at that school, it's on a boundary ex- exception. You understand? So.
I'd say if they've chosen to move, that would be then the last priority.
Okay.
Absolutely. We just, I mean, when you say scratch them, I mean, what we'll do is we'll come back with basically two and three as just, these two conditions are universally have to be met in order for even us to start down the path of, of, you know, preference. And well, then based on what you're saying today, we'll put together kind of the preference list. It's, we're first gonna look at this, then we're gonna look at this, then we're gonna look at this.
Yep.
Those, you know, preferences. And then we will have a, if there is a, if there are more kids than spots for a particular building, and, uh, they're at the same preference level, then this is our process that we're going to use. It'll be done by random selection.
I, I have a question. So for this cutoff of just July thirty-one, for people that make the request, and let's assume that there's three spots, there's three sections, one in each, one spot in each section, so those are granted. But then after, uh, do you tell those people that those are conditionally granted? Because then between July thirty-one and September one, we get two kids move in.
You would, you would keep them. I mean, you would just, that's the risk you'd run with an overload potentially.
And we wouldn't typically go to the max with boundary exceptions. So we may still allow for like one or two move-ins. Um, where we wouldn't push it to, okay, we're gonna be twenty-two per section.
As long as that's in the policy, or would you put that in the procedure rule?
Uh, no, I think we'd want that in the board policy that you, you say that, it's, it's similar to what we do with open enrollment.
Right.
Where the board sets, hey, uh, there has to be a minimum of one spot per grade, per building, left, you know, for, you know, for movement.
I would like to avoid overloading where we can, but I also, uh, wouldn't wanna kick kids out after they've been told they're gonna go to school there.
No, I think once, once you tell them to go in, I mean, the only other thing you could do is say, you're not gonna get this decision until, I mean, I mean, July thirty-first is pretty, it's pretty late in the game. I mean, really, the intention is it does somewhat discourage.
And we do have, like, the current and projected enrollment of the requested school can accommodate the.
Right. I, I, I would like to see us have a policy where the only way that you guarantee what grade school your kid goes to is if you move in those boundary. And one of our goals on redoing these boundaries was preservation as long as we can, if we can have it last for nine or ten years. And if we go with a real liberal policy and grandfather all these exceptions in, uh, we're gonna be back here doing it all over again in two or three years, because we're gonna have incredible imbalance.
I do think that having them reapply every year though, is gonna seriously mitigate the, 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 the building, um, effect of, of that. Um, and I, I, I guess I would, because it's only a one-year exception, I would lean toward not going back to parents on September one and saying, hey, I know we told you July one that you were in, but gosh, actually you're out at that. And that would, that would not be a great place to be, so, yeah.
And, and if you happen to have, you know, quintuplets that happen to move into third grade, and it puts over by three or four, or whatever it happens to be, then you know, that's just kind of the, uh, that's just the risk you run by allowing boundary exceptions. I mean, it's, it's not, you know, and we'll just have to deal with that, but I think you're absolutely right. Once we send out a formal letter from the district office that says you are, your boundary exception has been granted, then parents should be able to sleep at night and say, I don't have to worry about it until next year.
And I think unless there was a strong reason to order them, date, order them as they come in, I would, I would set a date and just say everything and by that date is equal. I think that would be easier on an administrative side for staff.
And that's the plan, is to do, make all the, like, K, we would always do that back in March, but now we'll have a different date. Um, and if it's July, or if it's June thirtieth, we can figure out the specific date. But yes, we would sit with the principals, meet, and then apply their criteria to, um, the list of requests.
And I even mean then if we come back to needing to, not having room for enough kids, that it wouldn't be a priority that while someone put submitted theirs in February, so they're first, I would just say, everybody was in by the deadline, that's, yeah.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't be a preference list, like when you submitted. Um, I think what we are going to though, um, we're gonna have to have, because of the nature of the resetting, so we'll, we'll, we'll come, we'll get your feedback, we'll re-polish this up. Um, but we will have to have some language in the policy that may sunset at the end of the coming year that pertains to the resetting of elementary boundaries. And so it may be that, you know, if you are requesting a fourth going into fifth grade boundary exception, we gotta know by, it might be February first. Whereas in all other years, um, you know, regular boundary exceptions might be, I think on there it was like April thirtieth, or something along those lines. So in order for us, because if we are truly going to honor them all, we have to staff it. So if, 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 you know, we can't, it, it may mean that a building may have five sections of fifth grade. And we, we haven't done that. So, well, I mean, we did it back before Rock split, but I mean, we haven't, we haven't done that as of recent. And so that may mean we have to either A, uh, hire, or B, transfer people. Um, and one of the things I think people have to remember, and this was part of the pre-referendum process, is it, it rarely does it work out perfect. You know, so that all of a sudden, oh, well, we can reduce a section over here, and that automatically adds a section over there. You know, so that all of a sudden, oh, well, we can reduce a section over here, and that automatically adds a section over there. A lot of times what'll happen is, you know, it may be that it's three kids from four elementaries, which adds twelve kids to one elementary, which requires us to add a section to handle it. But reduction of three kids at those other elementaries has done nothing to allow us to reduce a section. Do you understand what I'm saying? So it's, it's, it could be that the average class size at those other elementaries, you know, dropped, you know, one or two kids, which is still well within the, you know, the class size guideline, but because they all, let's say, wanted to go to Holton, we have no other choice, but we have to add a staff member in order to accommodate those requests. That's why it'll be important for us to know early on as we are building budgets and things like that.
The one, and the one concern I do have, I mean, I, in general, support the idea of letting those fourth graders finish out their fifth grade year in the same school. The one concern I do have is that if we are requiring that parents provide transportation, it's not really an equitable option for all kids. And so I don't know if there's anything we can do about that, if that's something that we're gonna put out there, but there are some kids for whom that's a much better option, and for other kids, that, that won't be an option to...
And that's on the boundary exception process now, they're required, if they wanna boundary accept, they have to do it.
Yeah, so you're saying for the fifth grade next year, then that would be, yeah, a lot of buses.
Yeah.
Just to be, just to be a...
I get what you're saying, no, I understand completely.
One of the things mentioned in this, in one of these examples, was shuttle buses between the schools. So go to where you're supposed to, your attendance is, and then shuttle to your preferred...
We would have to buy buses, shuttle buses, to accomplish that, because right now, we're using, and the timelines between the start, like, we have, what, a fifteen-minute window between all the elementaries, I believe, of their start time? So to accomplish the movements between the buildings and having additional vehicles?
So essentially, so that would mean that we'd have to have a shuttle bus potentially from all six elementaries to all six elementaries. So we would have to potentially at Rock have six buses that are gonna shuttle kids to, or, sorry, five buses at each elementary. So you, and we try not to drop the kids off elementary-wise until pretty close to the time school starts. So that would be the other component of, you know, getting them there on, on time. Like, I would, the only thing I would caution the board is, we could really start to go down Pandora's Box here with this thing. And once you do, as we found out with the more open boundary exception process, it's a, it's a painful process to tighten a backup. So there would be an added cost to that as well. I'm guarantee you Safeway would not be transporting all those kids at no cost, and you could potentially running a fifty or sixty-passenger bus for one, you know, one kid. I mean, I, I'm not, it's just, it, it could create a financial problem for us.
And just a hopeful thought, you know, once the, the attendance boundaries are changed, and then, then the parents would have to apply every year, it might be that over time, when this all sort of shakes down, out and down, that we can reconsider that policy too.
You know, the other piece that we talked about a little bit earlier, but it's going to be the kids that are assigned to the building is what dictates the open spots. Do you understand what I'm saying? From a standpoint of, it can't be, well, let's move these five kids from Rock to Prairie, so that'll all of a sudden free out five spots at Rock that we can then move two kids from Holton, and one kid's, I mean, we'll be forever shifting. Yes. But based on the assigned school, not necessarily based on, I, I, I don't know, I mean, we... I mean, I mean, we can, we can try to look at it, I mean, I don't, it just, it's gonna continue to be a puzzle to shift and shift and shift.
I'd be in favor, I think that the board is, general consensus is some type of moderate policy. It's not a wide-open liberal one, but one that doesn't allow any exceptions either. So it's something in the middle, and something that gives administration some flexibility to introduce. And then we can revisit it in prior years if there's a reason that we need to make something more flexible or whatever. But I think we gotta see how this starts impacting staffing. And I, I also wanna get back to that, and I don't think it's written into this policy, but the, given the option for teachers to move, you know, if, to, to the district where they have their house, is that, that's always an option. If they want to make sure that they teach in the same school, their kids go to elementary school, and then they can move buildings.
I mean, it's, it's, a transfer's an option, but we wouldn't bump another staff member in order to do it. So if you have a third grade teacher who wants to move, let's say, to Prairie, because he lived there, we wouldn't say to a Prairie teacher that, you know, doesn't wanna move, hey, you need to move to a different building because somebody that lives in your attendance boundary wants to work there. So it, it would only be if there was an opening, so it'd be like a, like a transfer situation. Our district's just not very big that that would happen all that much, that it would be that accommodating.
We do, though, if we get staff feedback, you know, that we have five staff wanting to move around, I mean, we would consider it. But again, like Nick said, it wouldn't be like an involuntary transfer, where that could have, you know, cause negative impact on the culture too.
And that is part of our process right now. We elicit feedback from all staff members, let them know what positions are open, and that used to be the end of the process, but recently, we started adding just an open-ended question. If something would become available, what might you be interested in? Whether that would be a different grade level, a different building, different level, could be, you know, many options, just so we know going into that process.
Right, I, I just like offering that option where you can, you can't always offer it, but the other, that, I'm sure from the other direction, there's times where the administration has to move a teacher, because it's not working out in the building that they're in. And so that's a different story.
Yep, we definitely reach out, the building principals have a process that we have established where they have the communication directly with those groups of teachers. So if you're going down from four to three, or three to two, they are talked to individually and said, told, you know, you need to fill the survey out. So if you don't fill it out, then you're more likely to move, as compared to someone who may rank order the preferences of other sites. So, yep, we have that.
All right, any other comments then on this? I, I think very good discussion, and I don't know how much time that was tonight, but it's probably now, we're over the multiple hours that, and you've spent a lot more than that, you know, in devising this. But I think getting board input on these, these are gonna be board policies, and they're gonna affect families and real lives here, so appreciate the work that's going into it.
So our plan will be to have what we think is about a final sample policy for you at the work session in August, in two weeks, along with sample rank order, kind of from what we've heard you say, so that you guys can have the last, not the last, but you can have some more discussion about it, and then at the September regular meeting, be the first reading of these policies. So, all right?
All right, moving on then, speaking of readings, we got a second reading of policy five hundred. And...
So nothing has changed on this, so, I mean, other than if people have any other questions, the recommendation from administration would be to approve the second reading of the five hundred series as presented.
We had, I mean, some discussion about questions about dress code and stuff, but I don't think we changed any wording ultimately. All right, is there any...
Didn't you change a little in it, looks like it to me?
Not, not since the, yeah, not since the first reading, so you guys have already done a first reading. So nothing has changed on these since your first reading.
I like the way it's reworded.
Move to approve.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any further comments on the second reading? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving these five hundred policies as proposed and approved in the first reading, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, the motion passes, and now we will get to the part of the...
Like to make a motion to convene a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen ninety-five, parent one, parent enough to consider specific personnel problems, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person preferred or referred in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Second.
Oh, I got Bob got in there on the second. Roll call vote, Baumann, Brown, not here, Hanson?
Aye.
Kattas?
Aye.
Logland?
Aye.
Whitaker?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion passes, where you will go to closed session.